Paul, you're on. Do your duty.
I have to go grab my water.
To suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law.
What else?
Due to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, December 8th, 2020, public meeting of the Falmouth shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregants. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Real-time public comment can be addressed to the planning board via Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting, send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Zoom login instructions. One, instructions and the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following address. planningboard. Two, please plan on 10 to 15 minutes. Log on to a previously used Zoom. Different public comments may be sent in advance of the meeting to falmouth... excuse me. at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may be submitted via emails.
Can't hear you, Paul.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Didn't like that. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access.
To 4th and December 1st. How say you on those? Paul?
Yes?
The minutes, November 24th and December 1st.
The minutes are not available at this time. They'll be available next meeting.
So you want to table them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, Paul moves to table them. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you. We have an approval not required. The applicant is Brian Beauchesne. Plan of land to exchange 207 square foot parcels between 5 Indian Ridge Road and Lot 258 Arnold Gifford Road. And our town planner says there's absolutely nothing that he sees wrong with it. Tom, do you wish to make a comment?
Yes ma'am, I do have the plan on the screen if any of the board members would like to see it with my notations.
Does anybody wish to see Tom's screen share? Or have you all seen it?
We had it in our papers.
Right. Okay. Okay, and as Tom said, this is a continuation of something that we did. What date was it, Tom? I don't recall right offhand. 2019. December 2019. So we're just finishing up on something we started by these two exchanges.
We started with the Merriman is just north of here. And then it's now time for the Beauchesnes. I think I hopefully pronounced that right. It's a 207 square foot.
So, does anybody have any questions?
Should we put it on the screen for the viewers at home?
We could, yeah.
Yeah, I think probably should. You know, even though we all have a copy.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, share it briefly.
Ready. Well, I believe what you have in front of you is a copy of the A&R plan with some highlights in yellow, green, and blue.
Yep.
The gist of this plan is it's a 207 square foot swap between the two property owners. Lot 261 here in the orange. I think I've zoomed in well enough that you can see it likely. That is the parcel in question that is going to be added to Lot 63 to the north. Pardon me. Lot 261 is going to be swapped for 263. So 261 is going to be added to Merriman's property. And 263 will be merged in with Lot 264. These all have the termination lot on them even though they are parcels because that is the reference that the land court uses. And there are numerous land court references on this. The process is, I understand it from Tom Bunker, is they had to do the first A&R, bring it to land court, and then bring it back and do the second A&R. So 207 square feet here to here. Frontage that's on Indian Ridge Road. A private wave that's improved. Not a buildable lot. Strip will largely be additional setback for the garage. You see at the top of the property. That dash line that you see certified number, very small print, 221-808 and 2221402. Those are land court certifications.
Okay, any comments? Then I would need a motion to endorse this without regard to buildability, et cetera.
Tom's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, all seven in favor of that. We have a couple of planning board decisions. The first, the applicant is Robert Munier. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right. Site plan review application to construct detached accessory apartment located at 200 Morland Road. And we have two versions of a decision in front of us. One gives more detail. The other one simply has the conditions. So whomever wishes to read it can take their choices to which they want to see. Who would like to read it?
Not me.
I'll read the shorter version.
That's fine.
Okay. Just make sure I got the right one. A decision summary sheet. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Robert Munier under Article 39. Site plan review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Plot Plan Proposed Accessory Apartment at 200 Morland Road, Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared for Robert Jan Munier, prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Surveying, dated October 15th, 2020. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet along with floor plans for the detached structure entitled Munier Studio Apartment Above Garage, prepared Beatrice bunker, scale of 1/4 inch. By 1/4, yeah, 1/4 inch equals 1 foot. And architectural elevations entitled Munier Studio Apartment Above Garage, scale of 1/4 inch equals 1 foot, as well as photographs. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 241-83B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Number two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. I was wondering if, I was laughing because people could hear my dog drinking.
Yeah.
He's loud as...
Very slurpy.
Yeah. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented but not both during the five months the owner occupant may be absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months and weekly, monthly rental, summer rental, so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance. In addition to the address being posted on the building, a sign indicating 209A shall be posted at the intersection of the proposed driveway and the existing driveway. Five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance. The applicant shall install a new 1-inch water service connection for this project. Seven, the applicant shall submit a license for the stone wall that is located in the public right-of-way. If the applicant does not have a license for the wall, then they shall apply to the Board of Selectmen for a license.
Okay, Bob has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments to this or corrections, Paul?
Yes. It's a letter we read, this shorter version. And I note the only difference between that and the longer version where the findings are eliminated. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Are there any other comments?
Just in the motion where it gave the size of the drawing, on one it said where a scale of, it says 1/4 foot equals 1 foot. It should be 1/4 inches equals 1 foot. So other than that, it's just a typo.
It's a typo, right. Okay, so all in favor?
Excuse me, I actually have a typo that I just wanted to check with. I apologize. There's an additional sentence in there that I would like to remove if it's okay with the board. For number four, the second sentence that says, "In addition to the address being posted on the building, a sign indicating 209A." That should not be included in there. I apologize. I must have left that in from a previous one and I would like to take that out.
Okay, so just remove that whole last sentence under number four.
Yep, completely remove that one.
And Bob, you agree? And Charlotte, you seconded it, correct? Anyway, whomever seconded, fam did, okay. You're all in agreement with that. Okay, so that correction being put in now. Thank you, Michaela. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, all seven of us. So the vote is 7-0 on that. Thank you. The next one is the applicant is Garrison De Silva. Site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment located at 11 Andy's Lane. And I have to apologize here because I did accept from Melissa Freitag that she could join us the last time in opposition to our vote that any comments had to be submitted through the chat function. So I apologize to the board and anybody else that I messed up. Sorry. Now, having said that, we do have a motion in front of us that can be read. And I think considering the amount of time spent and the things that had to be done with this, I think it's probably going to be wise to read the whole motion. Is there any objection, Tom?
If, that's fine ma'am. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page here. When we typically, there isn't any public discussion when the planning board is making a decision. But I think we sort of left it in an indeterminate state last time that if someone had a comment about what we were doing, some of the plans had changed, the board might entertain that. I'm not certain of that. But I'm certainly willing to give you the background on where we've been and what we've done in the interim. And I do see that in the chat that Melissa has her hand up.
Okay. That would be wise for you to do that, Tom. Thank you for your offer.
Very well. So as we've talked about before, this is a very unusual case. We have an existing accessory housing unit at 11 Andy's Lane that was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals in 2003. Since that time, the bylaw has been changed. It's no longer a special permit. It is a site plan review by the planning board. So in having conversations with town council on how do we deal with the fact that we are essentially replacing one accessory unit with a second accessory unit? How would we go about doing that? So council had recommended the letter that you've seen attached in your packet. So in addition to the draft decision that I'll be happy to go into with you, there is also the letter from 11 Andy's Lane about abandoning all rights and privileges for that special permit. And that would happen in conjunction with the occupancy permit for the unit. As I said before, typically you would amend a special permit with a special permit. But given the fact that the special permit is being, the bylaw has changed. Our apartment that's there has been removed. I've been on the property to inspect that. Town council and I both agreed that a special permit, to say, "I don't want a special permit," seemed odd and unnecessary. So on the advice of council, with the completion of those requirements, the applicant would be filing with the Registry of Deeds, abandoning all those rights and privileges. And then they get their certificate of occupancy for the unit. You do have the plans up. I can roll through the plans again if you would like and to whatever is the board's pleasure at this point.
Does anybody on the board want to have Tom put the plans up? Okay, so, no. And we do have Batania and Claudemir with us, too. Okay, so who would like to read the motion? I'll tap you again, Bob.
Okay, December 8th, 2020, draft. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Garrison P. De Silva for the construction of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit at 11 Andy's Lane under Article 240-38i 5A. Accessory apartments, procedures of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled 11 Andy's Lane, West Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared for Garrison De Silva, Batania Pereira, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, dated March 30th, 2020. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet along proposed floor plans. Entitled Pereira De Silva Residence, prepared by Labs Above, dated 11/22/2020. And elevations prepared by Garrison 11 and 6th Lane of the dwelling. Oh, 11 Andy's, okay, that was... 11 Andy's Lane of the dwelling findings. The applicant, Garrison De Silva, seeks to construct a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 11 Andy's Lane. The parcel is Zone Agricultural B, AGB, and located in the Water Resource Protection District and contains 18,005 square feet of land. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is approximately 790 square feet. The primary residence is approximately 2,674 square feet and contains three bedrooms. And the accessory dwelling unit is a one-bedroom. Therefore, the property will have a total of four bedrooms. Proposed percentage of total floor area of the accessory apartment is 29 54th percent of the total finished floor area of the principal structure. The planning board's review does not include building code review and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code. The planning board considered the above referenced referrals in the applicant's response and plan revisions in its decision in this matter. The board will condition its decision accordingly. There was an existing accessory apartment permitted on the property by the previous owner in 2003 under an earlier version of the bylaw that has since been amended numerous times. Previous unit has been removed as confirmed by the town planner at an onsite inspection on November 6th, 2020. This is by, this by right accessory apartment in effect relocates the previous unit to another part of the house under the provisions of 240-38 as amended November 14th, 2018. Town council has opined that the applicant should execute and record a document with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds abandoning all benefits and rights of the original ADU from the ZBA as a condition of the new unit approval by the planning board. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-38i of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. 241-83B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented but not both during the five months the owner occupant may be absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months and weekly, monthly rentals, summer rental, so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall contact the engineering division to address...
Bob? I'm going to interrupt you here because Tom added in another statement that becomes four. And then what you, the statement is, "The applicant shall record a document with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds acknowledging a permanent and unqualified abandonment of rights under Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, Appeal 74-03, recorded at Book 20653, Page 338." And then, so what you were reading as four becomes five. The numbers change.
Okay. So five, "Prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall contact the engineering division for address assignment for this parcel." Six, "Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance." Seven, "A new four-bedroom title 5 septic system shall be installed prior to occupancy. Properties that preexist with a density greater than one bedroom per 10,000 square feet in the coastal Ponte O'Leary district can maintain their existing bedroom count but cannot increase." Eight, "Proper erosion controls shall be used as required under the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control standard conditions adopted by the town, August 2020."
Okay, Bob made the motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. I also think, because I don't know whether you all have seen it or not, but there is a letter to the registrar. And I'm happy to read that if you like. It says, "Dear registrar, in connection with our application for a by right accessory apartment permitted by site plan review by the Falmouth Planning Board allowing us to complete renovations for a new accessory apartment on the second floor, I am officially recording the permanent and unqualified abandonment of rights under Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, Appeal 74-03, recorded at Book 20653, Page 338, allowing the original accessory apartment addition to the existing single-family home in 2003. This original accessory apartment in place of the basement when we purchased the home has been removed. Attached is the planning board site plan review approval dated December 8th, 2020, which includes condition number four." Number four, "The applicant shall record a document with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds acknowledging a permanent and unqualified abandonment of rights under Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, Appeal 74-03, recorded at Book 20653, Page 338." Thank you for your consideration in this matter. And then the signatures will be on there. And the attachment, it would be 11 Andy's Lane, Planning Board Site Plan Approval Decision. So to make the whole record straight, yes, Tom?
Just before we got to a vote, I wanted to address a couple of things in the chat. Are you ready for me?
Oh, yes. I said, "Okay." I guess you didn't hear. Sorry.
That's fine. I didn't want to interrupt the flow. So I'm going to share my screen for just a moment here. So I've been monitoring the chat. And one of the questions that Melissa Freitag has as one of the abutters, actually the next-door neighbor. I think it's nice enough to call the next-door neighbor the next-door neighbor rather than a butter. That's just my style. So Melissa's question is, "The existing plans for the second floor include this bump out that the draftsman drew here? And as you see on the proposed, that bump out doesn't exist because the wall goes straight across." So Melissa's question is, "Well, which plan are we approving? Because they don't match." This is what I would essentially consider a Scribner's error that there's, that the draftsman added this bump out. But as you see in the proposed plan, that wall goes straight along there.
Okay. Other others? Oh, that's it. Okay, because I saw something come up that Melissa also wanted to know whether we would be approving only the interior or whether this is an approval of the whole interior-exterior that we've seen.
As the board well knows, the accessory unit has to have the appearance of a single-family dwelling. So the board approves the interior, the exterior, and the interior floor plan.
Right. Okay, are there any other things in the chat that have to do with this particular decision, Tom?
Let me scroll back up, but I do not believe so.
Okay. So does anybody on the board have any questions about the decision and the letter to the registry? That would be made then part of the decision. Are you ready to vote on this then? Okay, so the motion has been made and we have a second on it. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, so it is 7-0. Thank you all.
Thank you for your patience with this.
And thank you, Batania and Claudemir, for joining us this evening for this discussion. Okay, moving on. Public hearing. Applicant Michael and Nicole Dingeman, definitive plan application and special permit application for a six-slot planned residential development located at 15B Timothy Bourne Cartway. And there were a few of us, yes, Paul? You've got to unmute yourself, Paul.
Location of this public hearing was published on November 20th and November 27th, 2020. Twenty-nine abutters were notified by certified mail return receipt.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, there were, well, John was out there today, but Paul and I were out on a site plan, a site visit. And so...
Him was there, too.
It was a little bit cold. Little bit cold today, but it was interesting. We have Mike Borse... We have Mike Porcelli with us, Kevin Clower. Okay. So. Please do your presentation of it. Those, I don't know whether it's Kevin or Mike who wants to go first, but do your thing.
Thank you very much. It's going to be a little, little bit of both of us. For, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant, Michael and Nicole Dingeman. They are the owners of the confusingly named Zero East Falmouth Highway. This is lot fifteen B on Timothy Bourne Cartway, and it's a seven-point-two acre parcel of land on that road. I'm joined tonight by Mike Porcelli of Falmouth Engineering. We are here tonight for two reasons. We are presenting a proposed definitive plan and also requesting a special permit for a planned residential development. This seven-point-two acre parcel would allow by right, a four-lot A and R plan or a six-lot grid subdivision plan, which we did submit to the town as part of our application package. What we are proposing, though, is a planned residential development or a cluster subdivision, which is those six lots that could be developed, but on a, a smaller basis. There, where they, they have to be at least ten thousand square feet, but they don't need to be the forty thousand square feet that are otherwise required, or forty-five thousand rather, since this is an AGA district. So the proposed plan, if I, if I can share my screen momentarily.
Of course.
The proposed plan is, as I said, a six-lot subdivision with fifty percent open space. The open space was designed as to provide a buffer around the entirety of the site, including the, the street frontage. And we thought that would offer more privacy both to the lots and also give it a nicer appearance from the streets. We wouldn't be putting houses right up on the street. But it is just slightly over fifty, fifty percent, and it's three-point-six-seven acres. The planned residential development is designed to protect the integrity of the open space and the environment, and we think it's consistent with what the town's municipal goals are. As part of the application, we are requesting waivers under the subdivision control bylaw. Two waivers specifically, three oh five thirty as to sidewalks within the subdivision, as this is a small six-lot subdivision with very little traffic. We just don't feel as though the sidewalks would be required. And also as to three oh five dash twenty-four, which regards the street offsets. The regulations call for not less than three hundred feet as an offset. We have proposed an offset of about a hundred and forty feet to Faith's Way. Again, this is a small development with little traffic generated, and relocating the street as a four-way stop with Faith's Way actually has a negative impact on the open space, not allowing for quite that envelopment that we've designed, and also infringes on the drainage easement that's located there. And we felt as though the sightlines from this further south location coming around this corner were much more difficult as opposed to where we proposed the, the street frontage, having a much cleaner sightline towards that corner. We have received the engineering comments and also the staff report. Those came in yesterday. We have not had the opportunity to respond as of yet. We'll be doing so shortly. We have reviewed the comments, specifically the engineering comments, and we feel as though all the comments are addressable. There's some issues we might not necessarily agree on, but, but we certainly can address. So we're viewing tonight as something of an introduction. We know that we have to submit some additional information that engineering has requested, but we wanted to use this as a chance to give you the overall idea of the development and also to see if there are any questions or concerns that we might be able to address.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns? Charlotte?
I did get a chance to go out and take a look yesterday rather than today, and I'm glad because I think I probably saw more without the snow there, and it wasn't quite so uncomfortable. And Tom talked me through the, the issues while I was there looking at the land. Kevin, I'm curious. You say in, in, in your written remarks that it would force the, the housing, if you were to try to get the, the new street lined up with Faith's Way across the way, that it would force the housing further to the back of the lot. I can see that it can be done, though, you know, spatially, and it, it would give you a bigger buffer between the, the new development and the existing developments that are there. So I'm wondering, when you worked it out, what your thinking was in, in not just going with that?
Well, we thought that, I, I don't necessarily agree that it provides more of a buffer between the existing development because the, the lot to the north would be essentially in the same location. It would only affect that, that buffer to the south. And it, it would just simply squeeze the open space in a way that the lot would be shifted to the rear. And we thought that the, having the more contiguous open space at the rear of the lot as opposed to more kind of squeezed throughout the entire site would be a better, a better outcome, both for the open spacing for the development. It wouldn't require the loss of, of any parcels, but we think that, that the development scheme is, is much better and more cohesive as presented.
Anybody else?
I wonder if that, that bothers anyone else, that failure to be a, a four-way corner.
Okay, I'm, I'll respond to that. I do have a letter to read, too, from an Abutter across the street. But I will respond to that, Charlotte, because when I went out there today and standing there looking, I agree that the roadway should be where it is coming out because if you squeeze it more to the left, if you're standing on the property, the sightline is just not as good because there's a curve coming around there. So you do not have the sightline. If you move it towards the edge of the property, it's, it's going to be harrowing if that road gets busier to have that road moved there. And where it is, where they've planned it for right now, I do like that better because you, you do have the benefit of being able to keep the, the treed open front. I do not agree, though, with wanting to do away with the sidewalks because there is a sidewalk on Timothy Bourne Cartway. There would be a discontinuation. But I think along the frontage there, considering that we do not know what's going to happen in the future and considering there may be children walking along there, to try to keep them out of the road, it would be a good thing to provoke, provide a sidewalk. And that is principally, I think, what we're thinking of as a planning board, is to provide walkability along there.
If I may, Ms. Griffith.
Yes, of course, Kevin.
Mr. Bob did call today to indicate that regarding the sidewalk along Timothy Bourne Cartway. And I don't think the applicant would have any objection to, to improving that sidewalk, which could be done pretty easily. I think what we are requesting as to a waiver is a sidewalk with, on, on the proposed street. But, you know, we've heard the comments regarding the existing sidewalk and kind of it's, it's disrepair and, and perhaps poor design. I think that could certainly be approved upon, and, and that's something that the applicant can certainly consider.
Okay, thank you for that. At this point, I should probably read the letter that came in. Actually, it was an email sent by Minyoung Lee and Diana Lee. It was dated yesterday to the planning board. This comment is in response to the lot fifteen B Timothy Bourne Cartway, and they give the map number. We reside year-round at three Faith's Way, which is identified as lot twenty on the site plan. We have a particular concern with the waiver requested for three oh five, excuse me, dash twenty-four Streets A six. As drawn, the plan for the new road is directly aimed at our house, in particular, the dining room and sleeping quarters. While six additional houses are not many, the additional light and noise from vehicles would adversely impact our quality of life. The proposed road is straight except at the intersection with Timothy Bourne Cartway, where it angles northwest. This all but ensures that vehicles exiting the proposed road will cut the corner as they make a left turn to travel south on Timothy Bourne Cartway. We are concerned that this will pose a safety hazard to cars, numerous residents that walk their dogs along the road, and children. We respectfully request that the planning board deny this waiver request. Alternatively, we respectfully request that the submitter modify the design of section of the proposed road to mitigate both of these concerns. This might be as simple as angling the proposed road southwest as it intersects Timothy Bourne Cartway. And standing out there looking at that, it seemed like it could be a viable solution to those concerns.
I, I spoke with Mike Porcelli earlier this evening, and the, I don't want to hold words in Mike's mouth, especially whereas he's here. But the, the, the road was designed the way it is in order to effectively be square with, or be perpendicular with Timothy Bourne Cartway. We, we have taken a look at the subdivision control bylaw, and there can be an angle at the entry point, as long as it's no more than sixty percent, without requesting an additional waiver. So again, that's something we could certainly look at and, and see if that, that angle could be, could be played with a little bit in order to still meet the, the subdivision control bylaw requirements and, and to see if we can address the neighbor's concern.
Great.
And if I could, Madam Chairman, I, I could elaborate on that briefly. All right, if I could share my screen just briefly, I'll, I'll, I'll show you what we're, the concept would be. I'll, I'll start with, I just want to show you an aerial photo in the, in the, the gentleman who's concerned lives here. And here, here's his house. And if you, if you make note of where Faith's Way is, and then recall, and I'll show you my plan in a second, where our, our drive, our roadway will be, which is basically where I'm highlighting on this GIS map. Now, if you look at the plan, here, here's our proposed road and, and the Concerned Butters houses generally in this area. So I, I can understand that concern. I looked at the subdivision control regulations that have to do with width alignment and grade in the town code, and they do allow that, we could actually take this section and slightly angle it just so that the wash of headlights doesn't wash across the Concerned Butters house. Ninety-five percent or more of turning movements exiting this subdivision will be left. There's really nothing of interest other than a few houses to turn right. So Route twenty-eight is out here. So folks that would, would live in the subdivision would come home, turn right in, and when they leave, they'd exit and turn left. So there could be a very minor manipulation of this that wouldn't effectively change very much of what you're reviewing tonight. That would mitigate against that concern. So that, that's one of, one, and there are some other matters raised in staff report and engineering reports that we could incorporate in all of revised plans and, you know, submit those all at one time.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Mike. Anybody else on, yes, Charlotte, and then Paul?
I think that Jim, Jim had a question ahead of me.
Yes, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't see your hand, Jim.
No, you couldn't. It, it got passed up, but I wanted to just reinforce the idea that when we make these decisions, where for sidewalks, we're making them for fifty or a hundred years. And I, I think it's important to have the sidewalks on, I was even thinking we should do it on the Little Street, but I definitely want to say, is there, if we need to put sidewalks on the, the cul-de-sac in the future, is there room to do it? Or is, is, is the, is the right-of-way big enough to handle it?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. The, the roadway designed for the new cul-de-sac meets all of the standards for width, twenty-two-foot wide pavement in the actual road layout itself is forty-four, leaving eleven feet on either side, and your standard subdivision cross-section. You have two alternatives, one with, one without a sidewalk, and the sidewalk could in the, if, if it were added in the future, fit in the road layout.
That's good. I think it's important. We're making the decision for a long time here, and I can remember looking at Sunrise Estates, and I was opposed to sidewalks, and Brian said, well, what if there's a blind person there? And I want to get out, get to the bus. You're going to have him walk in the street, and that's something we really need to consider. And I think Pat's, I think it's good enough to put him on Timothy Bourne Cartway for now. I just want to reinforce the thought process of thinking the longer term.
Thank you, Jim. And Charlotte, I believe you had a comment or a question, then Paul.
I have a question of Tom, actually. In my time on the board, which is now, what, better than three years? This is my first planned residential development, so it's really, goes back to that. I'm not familiar with them. So I was looking them up, and I see on the parcel area that's required, the, the exact kind of zoning, AGA, is not listed in the, in the chart that's provided. And I'm wondering, Tom, if you could tell me when multifamily units are not included, which they aren't in this application, what is the total required land area? For most of the agricultural ones, it appears to be.
I am likely going to defer that question to Michaela, who's done much of that research, and I'll, but I'll circle back around to you. We did have a very interesting thing, particularly on, in our zoning bylaw, where it actually said, talked about ACA as a zoning district. That's one of the things we apparently missed in the recodification. It's a typo, apparently supposed to be AGA, because there's no Affordable Care Act zoning district in Falmouth. So Michaela, if I can push you on the spot to answer that question about the minimum lot area, but I believe it's five acres, unless it is multifamily, but we'll confirm that for you in just a moment.
So, Michaela? I don't think she's going to get on the spot, Tom, but I think you're right. It's five acres.
Yeah, bear with me, please.
It does list AGB and under the five-acre requirement. AGA is not.
That's not there.
Only with regards to mul- when multifamily dwellings are required. It lists AGA, but when, without multifamily, it does list AGAA and AGB and ACA. Presumably, the ACA would be the AGA. And in that case, it requires the area required for two conforming building lots, which would be ninety thousand square feet.
Okay. Okay, so Charlotte, does that answer your question, or do you have more?
No, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Paul?
I just have a comment. I was wondering about the open space complement the fact of the fifty-foot buffer. At the beginning of his development, which I thought was a very nice touch. And looking in the back, I was wondering why he didn't move back further, but I see it's more than twenty-foot drop-off. Probably behind that, but I think the layout works very well. The only issue seems to be the entranceway. Good project.
Thank you. We, we worked a lot on these plans, trying to find something that we thought would be in line with what the town is looking for and, and the developer, and I think it's, I think it's a really nice project that they'll, we'll come up with.
Yep. Bob?
Just make sure. Okay, I'm not on you. I wasn't able to make it today because I, I work on Tuesdays, and I was wondering, there was mention of a sidewalk on Timothy Bourne Cartway. So there, there is a sidewalk there? Is it on the side of this planned development?
It is not.
It is not? Okay.
If, if I may, the sidewalk heads up to about a hundred and sixty-seven feet from the beginning of the Dingeman's property. It appears as though there was a temporary turnaround there at the end Timothy Bourne Cartway, which is why the sidewalk doesn't go further, but we wouldn't quite make it to that extent. In looking at the possibilities in the right-of-way that's there, I think it's conceivable that we can work with Kevin, if his client has expressed an interest in, 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 in looking at the sidewalk and looking what that design might be and where that sidewalk might be. The most logical place for a sidewalk to cross is a four-way intersection, which we won't actually have for this particular development because of the offset, if the board takes the route that it's going. So that, how that sidewalk sort of goes into place is a matter of Mr. Porcelli engineering and I all sort of sharpening our pencils and taking a look and see what's, what's possible there with, with, with the applicant's, you know, sort of tacit acquiescence at this point to say, yeah, I'm willing to participate. Say, yeah, I'm willing to participate, but at the same time, we don't know to what extent that is. But the general concept is to get a sidewalk on the street in front of the property and get it down to the edge of the property, the end of the open space. And, and see, I wasn't proposing to connect this sidewalk with the end of the Timothy Bourne Cartway sidewalk. Even though when you look at the, 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 the distance of the sidewalk in the subdivision, the sidewalk could be about five hundred feet. It's less than five hundred feet to get to that point, but it's not as easy to build a sidewalk on an active road as it is to build a sidewalk in a subdivision under construction. There's additional cost for that with road detail crews and things like that. So I think we're sort of talking about the general concept of what that sidewalk would be and where it would be at. And I think that's the subject of our, our next meeting. When we obviously continue this to look at engineering's comments and the like.
Because I thought in past conversations we've had about sidewalks, that we're looking at any place that has a sidewalk, we'd want to connect with any existing sidewalk. So that's, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yeah, it's a private way. And I, I, I met the developer who built the sidewalk. And essentially, it ended at that point, there's sidewalks across the street. And, you know, we don't necessarily have the ability as the, as the, as the town to build a sidewalk on a private way. And I know there's, there's a, a list of places where people are looking for sidewalks. So I doubt that this would be necessarily a municipal project to try to make that connection. But whenever we've got the opportunity to create some sidewalk, to have some connection in the future, I, we should likely take that. And that was the, the gist of this, this conversation.
Pam? Is the open space going to be part of whatever association fee they might have?
The, the open space would be held by, pardon me, be held by the association. There was no intent necessarily to deed that open space away.
But it will be able to be used by any children or adults living in-
Oh, sure, yes.
Terrific.
I think I understood that the idea was to keep it as natural looking as possible. So Pam, there wouldn't be any clearing or development back there. It would be kids climbing trees or whatever.
Kids need to climb more trees.
That's true. And eat more dirt, really.
Yes. Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Tom, is there anybody in the chat that has questions or comments on this?
I have been monitoring that. I know from what I see that there are a couple of folks who live in the neighborhood who are in the gallery as attendees. But I haven't seen anything, any questions from them through the chat function. And as we saw, Ming Yang Li did previously forward to the board their email that you read.
Which I read into the record. Okay. Any, anything else from the board? Okay, then I need a motion to continue this. Yes, Tom?
I just wanted to check with Mr. Sully and Mr. Plauer about when is a convenient date for-
Right.
And some of these issues to schedule a continuation for since the hearing. I'm going to defer to Mike here, because the, the, the changes are going to be more on his end. We, you know, I suspect we can come to a pretty quick answer with our, with our client, but it's a matter of getting back to engineering and, and the plans. I, I think we're looking at dates in January at this point, because it's December eighth, and the board's got quite agenda for the twenty-second.
Are you, if I could, are you meeting on the fifth?
The board's regularly scheduled meetings for January are the the planning board has a hearing for recodification on the fifth. And we may likely be talking about Davis Straits reset on the fifth as well. So I think it's a pretty chock full. It's our, it's those dates the planning board tends to set aside for bigger picture issues. So the regular scheduled planning board dates are the twelfth and the twenty-sixth of January.
I, I, I think the twelfth then is the logical choice. I will do my best to get the plans revised and submitted in a timely fan, manner. So that we can review them on the twelfth.
Thank you. So may I have a motion then to continue this definitive plan application and special permit application until January twelfth?
Don't move. Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, so there's six out of the six, because remember John has recu- oh, Pamela, where did she disappear to? So anyway, we've got the majority to continue it.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
We appreciate your time and I don't think I'll be back before you, so happy holidays.
Have lovely holidays yourselves.
Yes, you too. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye. Okay, let's get John back in. Okay, and I still don't know where Pam went off to. I didn't know she was leaving us at the point. So we have the planning board discussion, the committee reports. I know multifamily housing, are there going to be any other, Paul?
I was going to mention committee, committee reports. The last meeting, I made a presentation on the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee. And I just want to follow up on that report that the board's selectmen has extended that committee until June twenty-twenty-one. So I thought we were scurrying to try to get something finished this month. So that gives us a little bit more time to do some other things as well. I don't know if I have to be extended also, because my period on the board expired last June. So I don't know if we have to deal with that. And the second item is, we talked about another committee board, and I'll be pleased to do a presentation on a traffic committee when, when you have time on the agenda the next one or two days.
Okay, so you'll be doing a traffic study report then at that point?
Committee report like the last, whenever you want to schedule it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so now we, I assume are ready for the multifamily housing committee report?
John is our chair.
I'm looking to see who's going to speak. I don't know who.
Did, did everyone see the email from Mr. Bott about five o'clock this afternoon or fourth thirty or?
Yes. I don't know whether everybody did, but I did.
Discussion with town council?
Yeah.
Okay. So when we, we talked-
It came in late, Charlotte.
Wow. What does it say?
I think you'll have to read it, but-
Yeah, you will. It's, it's extensive.
We can go forward here. So at the last, last time we discussed this, I said it would be a few weeks before I can get the real answers. That, I know this, this question from town council is going to come up. But I need probably one more week and I can come up with possibly a solution. If not, I have an answer for what, what direction we should take. But also, we've been trying to move this forward for April town meeting. And I think, I think it's just not going to happen. We have recodification for town meeting in April. April town meeting may very well be on Zoom. And this is, this is, if it gets approved, a multifamily bylaw. Critical and important to the town. And I really would rather do it the right way and have, as we did before, have town meeting members really educated and the rest of the town educated, rather than trying to throw this against the wall and see what sticks or doesn't stick. But I really need to do this correctly. But I would hope by next, our next meeting, I'll have an answer for what town council sent out or what Tom sent out today. And, and then we can go from there. But I don't want to rush this. I'd much rather plan on having this be on the November town meeting.
Yeah, I was getting that feeling as well, John. It's just way too important. Jim? Jim, you're on mute. Jim, you're muted.
I suggest we have, just we did with the accessory apartment, that we actually try to do an FCTV presentation where we can prepare a discussion and share it with all town meeting members two or three times, so they have, they understand it. It worked well the last time. And Jeff Goff, they're, they're ready to do it. So I think we should, we should try to do that as well.
I think this is the same kind of thing as that, Jim. I think you're absolutely right, that the more outreach we can have, the better. To get people to understand it. Charlotte?
Um, I certainly agree with John and Jim, very much so. Two things. One, Tom, I just looked through my email to see what the town council sent, and I do not have anything from either you or the town council after noon today. So if you could send that to me again, I would like to receive that and be able to read it. But I also want to be able to say to the other members of the, of the planning board, John and Jim and I have been working on this. And we met with the two Bobs, Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell, in order to talk with them about the, the language in it and the content of it. And it was a very, very useful meeting. And the, what they had to say is reflected in the draft that you got today. Because one of the strongest things, I'll just mention a couple of them that they said. One, Pat, you had said something about the language not being appropriate. They didn't find anything wrong with the language. It was more about the content. And what they did say, because we showed them the letter from, I will say her name wrong, the new lawyer at the council, Eire, thank you, had sent us before. And she was cautioning us against being, making it a rental situation, that that might be problematic. What the two Bobs said is, listen to your town council. That the attorney general's approval of the rental bylaw in Nantucket, under whatever their conditions are and their particular rules, doesn't necessarily mean that we would automatically get approval here, that the attorney general's approval bar is really pretty low. And what you'd be doing is, if there's a problem with this legally, is if we approved as a rental bylaw, we would be inviting developers into testing it in court into a big litigation. And that would be no way to launch this. So we really needed to rethink that. And perhaps what they suggested was to think about what the two Bobs suggested, was to think about incentives rather than mandating a rental situation. So that's to take under advisement. That's what we've been advised. But I wanted the rest of the planning board to know that now what we have here, Bob and Bob have gone over. So that's useful to know also.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay. Tom, again, sent through an updated Form Based Code email to us that was from Horsey Witten and the, and Union Studios. That was a questionnaire that would be forwarded after the holidays, I believe. I did not print it. Yeah, Tom, it's quite extensive.
So I, I'll, I'll be happy to, to talk a little bit about what we've got going on, including share the, the beta website that the folks at Horsey Witten, who was working with Union Studios, put together for us, if that's fine. So there's two parts, there's two parts that we've got, is the website as well as the, the survey. So with, with your permission-
Of course.
I'm going, and, and always, it's a little tough for me to see what I'm doing online. So hopefully, you're seeing something that looks like livable and walkable Davis Straits.
Yes.
Now, this, this is the website they get to put together. And most of the images and most of the text are things that are presently in the town's Davis Straits and, and things we've talked about before. So there are four parts to the website. There is about the project. There is a, a section on Form Based Code. My internet connection is unstable. There is materials and resources. And there is taking action, where we invite the community to, to comment on things. So going back to the first tab about the project, it essentially brings those, that information is in the Davis Straits Plan and the LCP all onto the website. It shows us the, the project area here. And then at this point, you can click to go to the vision for the zoning, which is probably the section of the website that has the most information about the project that we put, that we're putting together here. How might Davis Straits zoning change and why? It shows the study area. It talks about the zoning types, whether we're talking about a base district or an overlay. That information is a little inside the baseball. As far as, you know, what's the difference to the common, to the layperson about a base underlying district and an overlay district? As I pointed out in my correspondence to the board, emails to the board, that while the Davis Straits study doesn't talk about affordable housing in any part of it, it was something that came up in our March third, twenty-twenty kickoff meeting. So there is a, a brief note about smart growth overlay and forty R, although we're not talking about a forty R. Just the fact that there was an affordable housing component to it. It got into the character studies, the different character areas of the residents. Talked once again about whether you would do this as a by right use or a special permit. Once again, a little on the wonky side for folks who are, who are sort of lay folks. And we talk about those dimensional requirements. How would those setbacks be? What would those building heights be? What would that lot size be? And then it talks about residential density and the design standards, and then ties into some of the previous work we've done. The visual preference survey and some of those graphics that the folks at Union Studios did for us. These are live links. If we click on this, it'll actually take you to the, the Union Studios visual preference survey that we did previously. Give a second while my diesel computer brings that up. Hopefully, it'll be here in just a moment. So that is the, the, the study that we've previously done. So essentially, what we're trying to do is put as much information out there for folks as we can to point out that this has been the, the product that the town has been working on for some time. So I'm, you know, pretty impressed with the, the website they put together for us. Now is a tough time during the holidays to likely launch something. So what I would hope that we would be able to do in the interim is to take a look at this, take a look at the survey. And at our, another meeting that we might have the middle of, or the first of January, give any comments, any feedback. I'm going to get rid of this thing, because it's taken up a lot of room and not exactly what I thought I was going to see there. And, and, and look at both what the content of the website is, as well as the survey that has been presented. We usually try to keep a survey to, you know, one page front and back. Because if you get too much into that, you, you start to lose folks as they start to click off boxes in the survey and they realize how, how long does this thing go on for? So I'm going to stop sharing my screen for a moment. That is, you know, where we're at right now in looking at introducing the project to the broader public. The thing that we have been talking about as always in the age of COVID is how do we get meaningful public interaction? Where you can't bring a bunch of people into a big room like you would with pins and maps and things like that. How do we do the digital equivalent of that? So those are things that we are, are still in the midst of discussing with our consultants, how we would get to sort of really have meaningful discussion with the Butters as far as shaping the project and developing the regulations. We have also shared with the folks from Horsey Witten, the ownership of the property, both commercial and residential. And they are putting together letters that we will be sending out to the stakeholders, both commercial and residential, looking for their input and inviting them to, to this participation, participation in, in, in designing the project. And then lastly is the survey that Pat mentioned earlier. That survey is something that we would be sending out, a, a link to the website on Survey Monkey. But we know that not everybody has a computer and not everybody's comfortable with one. So sort of a standard thing that planners have been doing forever and ever, is we've been asking the folks who send out bills to people, whether they're excess tax or, or water bills, if we could perhaps put an insert into their, into that mailing. So it goes out to the general public. So we've had some- So we've had some early conversations with the collector about that and, and putting something out. So we would have that information both from Survey Monkey and from the hard copy, uh, just to make sure we're reaching as, as many folks as we can, uh, on, uh, on the project. Jim? I don't want to take the chair's role, but it looked like you had a question about something.
Yeah, he does, so, Jim.
Well, I, I just wanted to comment that the, uh, I think we should make sure that what we do fits the town meeting format for font sizes and everything. I found the, uh, printing pretty small on those websites and could be hard. We have a standard, uh, aspect for town meeting for font sizes and fonts. I think we should conform to that. And I also think, uh, well, I'm sure it will be that, the other thing is even if they don't have a computer, if we get this so that it can be converted into YouTube and loaded up, they can watch it on the television. So I, I think it's important that we, we plan that it eventually becomes a, converted into a, a video and out on YouTube that, that, at, at least if they have, uh, the bills to watch on their TV, they can watch it. But other than that, it's really just the size of the print and, uh, and the formatting.
Yeah, and along that same line that you were talking about, uh, you know, going to FCTV, we've had some conversations with the FCTV about, uh, putting together a show for this as well. When I first broached the subject, Jeff said, oh, you want to talk about recodification for like four nights on TV? I'm like, no, no. Important as it is, we, we will lose our audience share if we're, we're going to talk about recodification. The idea for the, the series of, uh, of, of things with FCTV would be about walking through the Davis Straits project and putting those information out there. So we would have a sort of a regular gig as we've done previous to that. Uh, FCTV seemed receptive that, right now their studios are closed because of COVID. But, uh, I've got a call in to Jeff to talk about how we work through that. It may be that we just set up shop in the selectmen's meeting room. Because there's cameras in there, we've got a big screen there. We could get, uh, Steve Cornachi, whoever that guy with the big map is, to come maybe do a guest visit with us. Uh, but anyhow, I, I think those are our options to kind of get this out to the general public. We want to use as many levers as we can, uh, direct mail, uh, yeah, websites, uh, push notifications. Uh, Michaela has been having some conversations with, uh, the, the, the town manager and IT about, uh, social media as well. Uh, there's some social media constraints the town has in place, uh, that we're working through to have, uh, you know, push media through Twitter or Instagram or Facebook on this as well. So we're, we're looking at, you know, how do we, you know, push the project out to folks so they've got an idea what we're doing? Uh, and, because not everybody reads the paper, not everybody watches TV, not everybody goes on the internet. So we're trying to get the information out as broadly as we can.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, um, Michaela, uh, has done the changes in that one, um, referral to the ZBA. And so I want to turn the floor over to Michaela right now. It's not on the agenda, but she just wants to know whether the changes she put in are okay with you so you can, she can send it off to the ZBA. The other one off, okay?
Hi, everyone, um, yeah, so I made the revisions that you had asked me to make last time. Um, I'm happy to share my screens so you guys can all see the letter if you'd like. Um, or I can read it, um, out loud to you guys again. I'm happy to do both if you'd like. But basically we made the revisions, um, and we just want to check that everyone is, um, happy with the letter as it is.
Okay with you guys? Go ahead, Michaela, share your changes.
Okay, I will, uh, wait just one second. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and, and just read it out loud as well then. I, I think that's probably easiest. Dear Noreen, the Zero Percival Road project was discussed at the 1110 Planning Board meeting following a site visit and at subsequent meetings, and the board had the following comments and concerns regarding the project. The planning board stated that although the, uh, that although the developer is going to make improvements over Percival Road and the town does need affordable housing, while the vote was not unanimous, the majority of the planning board does not support the project. The board did not feel that the proposed density was in line with the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding area. The proposed 16 lots are too dense and would result in too many trees needing to be cut down for the area. Due to the proposed density, the developer would need to strip the land of numerous trees. As such, the board would like to see a planting plan to ensure there is a vegetated buffering for the neighboring houses. The developer proposes to widen the roadway, but the entrance on either end of the road will still be functionally a one lane, will still be functionally one lane, excuse me. I'll correct that typo myself. And therefore will present a safety issue for vehicular traffic. Additionally, due to the roadway length with no lighting, the board would like to see lighting added to the roadway to make it safe. The board also discussed the need for added sidewalks for safer pedestrian travel. The board discussed that the road is basically a one-way street. The road ends in a very narrow, small manner and the access is poor. Cars are unable to pass by each other on the current street with existing conditions as they are. The board felt adding 16 units to an essentially one-way street would only further crowd the road. Uh, the planning board also felt that if the zoning board of appeals is going to make a connection, if at all, through harness drive, then it should be an emergency-only access point. The connection should have a gate across it for emergency vehicles only and not be utilized as a common access for people because of the existence of the three daycare facilities on the road with 30-plus young people in attendance. Lastly, the board also noted that the conditions for the location as stated in the Falmouth Housing Production Plan are not met with this location. The board stated it did not meet the plan in regards to serviceability, transportation, and location. They felt that it was too far from amenities such as shopping centers, schools, library, or other points of interest to exist without a car and that they would prefer to see a 40B applications that do coincide and align with the approved HPP. In addition to not meeting the HPP, the board felt the location also did not meet the state's requirement for the location of a 40B development.
Okay. Thank you, Michaela. Jim? Uh, Jim, you're, you're muted.
How about a reference to the local comprehensive plan? Or has that just been supplemented now by the HPP and we don't use the, the local comprehensive plan anymore?
Not in regard to the 40Bs, I think, Jim. But I don't know. The interest, the interest here is to say, okay, is it good, good enough to get off to the ZBA reflecting our, our, the changes that we asked Michaela to make? That's the point of this, not taking a vote, just, is there any objection to sending it to the ZBA? Because if there is an objection, we will have to bring it up at our next meeting. So is there an objection to sending it to the ZBA as Michaela has changed it?
No, but I have a comment.
I have a comment also.
The, uh, third to last paragraph, uh, it says that, uh, I can't read it now because it's not on the screen.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was more confusing. I can bring it back up, my apologies.
The, uh, third to the last paragraph, the, uh, last sentence where it says, "The board felt adding 16 units to an essentially one-way street." It's not a one-way street, it's a one-lane street.
Okay. So Michaela can change that word from one way to one lane.
Lane, yeah.
Okay. And John, you had a comment or a question?
I'd like to address the last paragraph.
Okay.
Where it says, "The board felt the location also did not meet the state's requirement for the location of a 40B development." I asked, uh, an applicant for a 40B development in Falmouth for a copy of what the, the state required for a site plan review, or a site plan approval. And the state has a 10-point system that they use. Every applicant has to fill out the 10 points. How far from a church, how far from a shopping center, how far from a, uh, government center like a post office, how far from schools. So they have a 10-point system that they use. And this applicant, as all applicants, would not get a site plan approval from the, from the state if it didn't meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you, John. This is getting way farther afield than I had anticipated since it's not on the agenda. Do you believe we should bring it back up at another meeting and go over it again? I, I can't, I can't see, I've only got four of us here. So should we bring it back up at another meeting for official action still further?
No, I don't think so, but I want to thank Michaela for including the two points that I especially wanted. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think she should address John's concern with the last paragraph.
So take that sentence out.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right. With that, send it off to the ZBA, correct? We don't need to vote on it or anything, it's just, okay, fine, go.
Yep.
I don't know when the ZBA is hearing this, but I know they are looking towards our referral to them. Okay, thank you all for that. Are there any announcements? Okay. General correspondence, I already read the one for the development. But I have another one here that I referred to the last time. It's from Trish Favuli to all municipal departments. Uh, Tricia is a director of assessing, and this is regarding assessing department property data. From time to time, we are asked about our data in the town's database. I would like to make sure everyone understands that information in the assessing records was and is gathered for the sole purpose of generating value, valuation information for tax purposes. Using this information for any other purpose may lead to false conclusions. Assessing departments have historically considered items such as building size, whether a parcel of land is developable, and number of bedrooms, only in the context of value. In the past, this assessing department may have combined building lots on its records as a matter of their own convenience, as a re, result of the owner's request, or to reflect actual use. Building size may have been gross area, above, area above grade, or living area. A land parcel may have been coded unbuildable because of the uneconomic cost to cure some deficiency rather, uh, than the legal status of the parcel. Multiple, uh, multi-families may have a special permit or may not. We list bedroom count as we see the use. There is no correlation to health regulations. We assess the property as we see the use at the time of the site visit. Assessing department data might serve as a clue that further investigation may be appropriate, but it should never be final evidence of anything more than assessment information. Please make sure you are using assessing records in a manner that recognizes the limitations of the information. So Trish felt that was important, that, uh, all departments received that because evidently people, including us, are using assessing information, perhaps in ways we shouldn't. We have, we just got from, uh, Julian that the selectmen would like to have a joint meeting. They can do so at our December, at our December 15th meeting, which is next week. Um, at 6:30, we would host the meeting. We have not yet determined, although the planning board has given certain indications of things we would like to see as topics, uh, we've not yet determined the agenda and that will be determined as soon as Megan says yea, nay, or add some of her own things to it. So it appears that we will be having a joint meeting with the, uh, select board on December 15th at 6:30. Paul?
This time meeting is just between the planning board and the select board or other boards invited.
Just the two boards, Tom?
Yeah, i- if I may, I'm just going to read Julian's very brief, uh, email to, to, to Pat and I that I forwarded on to the board, uh, earlier today. So, uh, I, I'm writing to confirm the planned joint planning board, select board virtual meeting for 6:30 PM next Tuesday, December 15th. I have noted the three suggestions from your October 21 email below. Not sure we have the transportation committee as a specific topic, unless we want to make this, uh, a three-way meeting for obvious reasons. We may, however, want to talk in a broader sense about transportation issues and downtown parking. I could invite Peter McConner and Chief Dunn to join us if they are available. Peter could talk about the project in the queue. The other topics of multifamily housing and perhaps affordable housing and communication between boards would likely be welcome. However, I wait Megan's confirmation, any specific preferences she may have for the joint, uh, agenda. As in the past, we were doing the joint posting in the case of a Tuesday meeting rather than Friday. So what they have on the, uh, on the, on the docket from our, uh, previous discussions about this was, uh, downtown parking, uh, and communication between boards, I think, was the things that we had from our October 21, uh, conversation before. That was transportation committee, downtown parking, multifamily housing, and communication between boards is what we previously said. But I guess the question is, we have confirmation on that, uh, and, uh, if there's anything else that, uh, someone had been pontificating on, that we want to potentially add into the mix, um, uh, let's, let's talk about it.
Charlotte?
I'd like to, um, add something to the mix if it's okay with everybody else. I noticed in the, uh, in the town report, I don't know if you all get, um, copies of this. You probably do, and you probably look at the planning department report first, just to see what we're saying about ourselves. Um, they hand those out, uh, to the, uh, town meeting members, that's where I got mine. And I noticed in the planning department report, there was no mention of our design guidelines, which we adopted this year, um, and seemed to have been, uh, dropped like a rock to the bottom of the, of the pond. So I would like to call attention to those guidelines if we're going to have a joint meeting. That would be one, if that's okay with other people. And two, I think if we're going to talk about multifamily housing, our subcommittee ought to meet before, uh, next Tuesday to, uh, decide how we're going to, uh, approach that.
Okay, I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, it's because we don't know that we think we ought to get our act together.
Yeah, I understand that. Pam?
Well, I think I'd like to have a little bit more information and more finality to the bylaw before we spend time talking to the selectmen. I'd rather go to the selectmen with something much more finalized, at least within the board.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I read that and, and typed that as multifamily housing, uh, in general, not specifically to the bylaw.
Okay.
Efforts to create multifamily housing through the local bylaw we're talking about, through Davis Straits, because I don't think there's any doubt that our intention is to, to multifamily housing in the Davis Straits reset area. So I think likely an opportunity to talk about, you know, where we're at and where we're trying to push with multifamily housing. Uh, and I, you know, we'd be happy to, uh, share the, uh, the draft website as well on Davis Straits with folks once again to sort of push those multifamily efforts every chance that we get, uh, to the general public.
That's how I understood it too, Pam, is that it would be more, more of a generic, getting their input on it. Okay, as well, they're getting our input on the Davis Straits in particular. Paul, you had something?
Yes, I'd be very concerned with what Tom has just read to us. I'm the representative of the planning board on the Transportation Manager Committee. And that committee is preparing a downtown parking white paper. The fact that that is underway, and they're going to have a meeting with the planning board and the select board before that's even given to either one, I find very disturbing. I also attended the EDIC meeting this morning where they talked about assignments to various committees. And it was clear within that group that there was a lot of confusion, uh, the difference between the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Transportation Management Committee, and others. There's a lot of confusion out there. Following that meeting, I had a lengthy discussion with the chairman of the Transportation Management Committee. And he also agrees that there appears to be a, um, a lack of support or understanding of what these committees, and particularly the Transportation Manager Committee, is trying to do. That's a committee from the board of selectmen, a select board. And the fact that there's going to be a meeting without the people who were asked to do that not only confuses me, but also offends me as being a member of that committee. So I think we ought to think this thing through before we start getting into something that we're not prepared to deal with.
Paul, these suggestions were made, I believe, back in October. And I think at that point, the assumption was made that it'd be much farther ahead. And I think you probably had that same feeling, that you'd like to see it be farther ahead than it is. So, um, these were the ones that Julian had received from Tom way back already. So some of them may not be appropriate anymore. And in particular, Julian also said that he did not see transportation as being, um, a good topic for this meeting because we'd have to involve others. So I don't think it's going to happen, Paul, as far as transportation at this particular meeting. Anybody else have any comments or want to add anything?
Transportation, would that leave us with just multifamily housing?
No, it'd also be communication. Tom?
I, I think, uh, from what Julian wrote, uh, the conversation was to talk about the, the broad efforts, but not specific to the work of the Transportation, uh, Management Committee. Because that would involve, uh, if we... because that would involve, if we have the Transportation Management Committee, then we've got that three-headed joint meeting that the planning board has been trying to, to, to avoid, to sort of focus on those issues between the two of us. So I fully hear what Paul is saying, and I think we, you know, within the, in the day or two, we've got to put something together for Paul, I mean, for, for Julian. I'd be happy to, to work with Paul on how we might shape that sort of discussion about these, these ongoing efforts we talked about in October. Typically, these things are sort of broad, but I'm, I'm very flexible in what the board's wishes for the, for the, for the, for the joint meeting.
Okay. Charlotte?
I didn't get the comments on whether or not we were going to bring up the issue of the design issue, the work of the design guidelines, and attempt to share it with the, with the Board of Selectmen.
I think, Charlotte, that we've not got that, as you said, it's dropped to the bottom of the pond. I think our own board probably doesn't remember what's been done. So we'd have to come up to speed on that as a board before we could share it. You could probably. I doubt I could in any detail.
Well, what is it then we're planning to say about communications that we're also well-versed on?
Communication of the boards with each other. How do we want this to be rolling out? What kind of communication?
Have we discussed this?
I think that was something that Bob had, had offered. Yes, sir.
Seems dumb. We might not be ready for this meeting at all.
Well, we may not be. It's just a week from now.
I'm thinking the very same thing. I'd like to put it off, honestly, because if we can't even figure out what we want to talk to them about, that's a major communication blur.
To pull two boards together to exchange generalities about stuff we haven't discussed is not a good use of anyone's time.
I agree.
Bob?
So I think what we need to do at a very near future meeting is bring up the design guidelines, and then wait till the white paper from the Transportation Committee is done, and then suggest a time when we meet with the Select Board.
Sounds reasonable to me.
We have these things to talk about, because they are important.
Not more notice.
I'm dying to tear into the transportation aspect.
One week's notice is not, not really sufficient.
No.
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 No, that, that was my feeling too, John. You know, we came out with this, I think it was three weeks ago, and had not gotten a response, so there's no preparation time, actually, to speak of.
They may be feeling the same way. They may be feeling the same way as we are.
Really?
They haven't suggested any agenda items that they wish to discuss with us.
No.
Well, because this is, we were supposed to have met already, but they couldn't meet, or no, we couldn't meet then at that time, because we already had a full agenda. These dates were suggested quite some time ago.
That was probably without thinking about COVID and the impact it had on,
Right.
you know, all the committee's work and everything else, so I'd like to propose to them that we postpone this.
If it's just simply to fulfill the requirement of the charter that the Board of Selectmen or Select Board and the Planning Board meet twice a year minimum, it does no good, as everybody is saying, to meet just to meet.
No.
We need to be talking about substantive things.
Agreed.
So the board concurs with that?
It do.
Okay. So Tom, if you would, Paul?
Tom, would you have any comments on that? You're the one who's been coordinating it.
Do I have to comment on that? I'm never gonna fight the planning board, in spite of what you say. I'm never gonna fight the law. Yeah, you know, trying to put together the joint meeting, you know, it's, it's, it's great to have these opportunities to bring people together if we've got, you know, sort of a, you know, sort of a program put together. But I, I can't argue with the board on the discussion tonight about, you know, we've got a window available, but we just don't have anything to hang in the windows, is what it sounds like.
Charlotte?
So I suppose we could either cancel our meeting for next week, or we could use the meeting to discuss the things that we don't know about.
Right.
We could, we could advance them, at least the thinking on the board could advance, so that maybe we would be better prepared to meet in January.
We could discuss the things that we want to bring to the Select Board.
Well, and we could discuss each of the items enough that we either know one another's mind, or we've developed ourselves to one mind on a subject.
Well, also recall that, that fifteenth, the meeting on the fifteenth was our, in quotes, third meeting of the month. And we had assumed at that time that there might be more on the multifamily housing to be able to really sink our teeth into. That was the purpose of that. And those meetings are supposed to be limited to an hour and a half. Now, considering that our next meeting on here is December twenty-second, I do not know what's on that meeting at this point. Is there, what's scheduled for that, Tom?
We're gonna take a look here in just a moment. But I think on the, the meeting on the fifteenth, we can certainly post a meeting for that and include items for a future joint meeting with the Select as well as maybe get some feedback on the Davis Straits information, the survey, and the website for any changes we're gonna make on that, because we would like to get that live right after the first of the year, and that would for us an opportunity to kind of push that out rather than have a meeting about it in January. So December fifteen, we could do that discussion about the joint meeting as well. So with that, let me see what we got queued up for the twenty-second.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do on the fifteenth, Tom. Could you please have sent to us the design guidelines that we approved, so that people could refresh their memories?
Good idea.
What I'd love for you to do is send me an email with your, with your, with your ideas about, because I'll capture as many of them as I can and bring them all to the fore on the, on the twenty-fifth, pardon me, on the fifteenth.
Jim?
Yeah. I'm in totally agreement with Charlotte. I have a different recollection. I believe, if you review the minutes, we brought this up, we voted on it, and it hasn't been presented, and the fact that no one can remember, it's a serious thing, and we need to refresh our memories. But I strongly believe that the design guidelines have been discussed, viewed, voted on it in the minutes, and I don't know why the other people don't remember, but I certainly do. And if we do our homework to get ready for the Select one, let's get it done.
They were essentially like we got from Barnstable County.
They're from, they're from Yarmouth.
Pardon?
Yarmouth.
Yarmouth, okay.
They're from Yarmouth, and we were, we, all we wanted to do was change the pictures so that it reflected Falmouth more. Falmouth buildings are included in it, but not as much as they should be.
Right.
But other than that, we approved them, and we were going forward to make those changes.
So we haven't done that, and so it is not completed yet.
Nevertheless, it is an included document, and we can bring it to the attention of the Selectmen and anybody else who's listening.
Sure. Bob?
I, I can remember everything that Jim said, about going through them and boarding on them and all that. But as far as recollecting anything specific out of them, I couldn't do that right now.
Right.
I would have to have, I would have to have them in front of me in order to, because it's been a while since I've, I've gone.
We all would.
So.
Well, the other thing is too, I'd like to, and we don't have it, I would like to have them completed so that we could have them in spiral-bound form or something like that that people can actually refer to. They can be on the Planning Board website, too. But they're not completed like that at this point.
But we don't have to wait for that to happen in order to discuss them with the Board of Selectmen. We have approved them. They may not be as pretty as they should be, but they're approved and they should be operable. The other thing is, I hope we have enough time on the fifteenth to discuss the latest draft of the multifamily housing thing, the overlay district. It's got a lot of elements in it, so that we actually have that discussion.
But John said he wouldn't be ready yet. He said, John said he wouldn't be ready yet to do that. John, if you're gonna talk, you're on, you're muted. Okay.
The email that we received today at the last minute involved a meeting with Town Council that has to be dealt with. And I don't want to say it can be done in one week. So it, it will be dealt with, but it's gonna take some time, and probably we're gonna have to have a meeting with Town Council to try to get this resolved at some point. So it was not unexpected, but to get it to last minute is, we seem to be getting a lot of stuff at the last minute anymore. I don't know why, but I get more emails at four o'clock in the afternoon from the Planning Board the day of the meeting. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but anyway, I have to deal, this has to be dealt with. It's a legal issue, and I don't want to say it can be done in one week.
Right.
It may be, but I don't want to say it will be.
Okay, Charlotte?
The point I'm trying to make, John, and I hope that it's not a difficult one. We don't have to have it finished and perfect for the Planning Board to discuss it. That way, all we're doing is asking them to comment on an already wrapped package. Better to have a discussion while it's in the making on the Planning Board, so the whole Planning Board is with it and contributing to it and can see how it's growing. It doesn't have to be complete for us to discuss it. In fact, it's better if it's not.
After you read the email from Town Council, call me.
I will.
Whether it's tonight, or tomorrow, or the day after, call me. Please.
Paul?
I realize the Board of Select want to have this meeting because of the charter review, because of the charter. And I'd be reluctant for this board to say, no, we don't want to meet. I'm objecting to the fact that when the item's on the agenda, it doesn't seem appropriate. Maybe what we could do would make it more of a philosophical discussion. These are the issues that the Planning Board is dealing with over this timeframe. To give them an update of things like recodification, Davis Straits, multifamily bylaw, and those kinds of things, they're not surprised. The impression I'm getting is that the Board, the Select Board is so overwhelmed with information that they're not even keeping track of a lot of different things. And there might be an opportunity to say, hey, this is what the Planning Board's trying to do in the next six months or so. Tom has that. He's planned that out. And it might be relatively easy to, just to bring it up to notch it up a level, instead of talking about specifics for a parking downtown. Talk about the, what the Planning Board is trying to do and the kinds of things that they're aware of it. Because I don't think they're aware of a lot of the things that were going on. Even today, when we had a discussion at the EDIC on the difference between the Traffic Advisory Committee and Traffic Management Committee, one member of the Board of Select on that board didn't seem to even appreciate the difference between the two, or even understand the two, which I found very, very confusing. So maybe we need to notch it up a bit and just have a bit of a more philosophical discussion on what we're trying to do rather than having them agree to specifics at this time.
Paul, I like that. Thank you. So rather than saying, no, we won't, you're absolutely right to keep the, these Select Board informed as to what the Planning Board is doing actively right now. By the same token, wouldn't it be nice to know what the Select Board's major concerns are? And what they're working on?
Tom would have to do this, but he, he really has it for the most part. So more and more work, because he doesn't have a lot of people helping him there, but I don't think it'd be that difficult to pull that together, frankly.
You mean what we're working on?
Yeah.
The recodification, design review, multifamily housing.
Davis Straits.
Davis Straits.
There's a lot of things there that.
Just make a list that we can discuss these things. Tom?
A, a couple of things. First off, I'm, I'm, I'm going as fast as my little legs will carry me, and my apologies as soon as things get out to the board late. Regarding putting things together for a meeting for next week, that is gonna be, I, I just don't see, I can, you know, I, I, I don't know I can do that. Regarding the meeting on December twenty-second, what we've got in the queue right now is the Cape Public Estates is looking for a lot release. We're having our very first opening of a hearing for a contractor's yard in a single-family residence on Sandwich Road. We've got a boat storage and for, on East Thomas Highway, and we're gonna have a presentation from Bob and Matt about a proposal to convert a golf club into solar panels. So we have a very busy December twenty-second, and in the interim between now and then, the staff will be preparing comments for that to hopefully get to you as well in advance. You know, we have, and I've said it before, and I know you're tired of hearing, we have a capacity issue with Barack. So if the board was comfortable enough by graciously saying to the Selectmen, you know, we'd like to take some time and really curate what we'd want to talk about for a future meeting next year, that seems to make a lot of sense to me. And we can take some of that time on the fifteenth, because the twenty-second is gonna be packed full of things. This will be our fourth meeting in December with the first, eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second, and just putting those things together takes time. So that's, those are the constraints that I'm letting you know. We got a busy meeting on the twenty-second, so we don't want to add anything to that. We've got an open slot for the fifteenth. Whether the board wants to try to put something together for a joint meeting with the Selectmen, I, I think, I thought I heard the board say, let's put it off till next year. You know, there, there's, all I can say is there's only so many things we can get done, and I don't know that I can get all those things done.
Okay, if we are going to put this off until next year, which seems advisable, because then we'll have only seven days to put everything together for it and make sense of it. If we're gonna put it off till next year, I would like to know a date secure when the Selectmen can meet, because we are more flexible if we know that in advance. But we need to know that probably a month and a half in advance, because as you can see, our office has scheduled things out in approximately one-month increments. So we'd need to know that about six weeks in advance, that there is a secure date that the Selectmen have as well. Am I making sense on that?
Yep.
Okay. Because I don't want to have to cancel. I want to be able to be prepared for it. And I don't want them to cancel on us because something comes up. If it takes that we have to meet on a Saturday, then so be it. I don't want to do that either. But those Saturday meetings, meetings seem to take place, and nobody cancels. So there's always that option that we just don't meet during a week, but we make a Saturday meeting.
Well, we've been meeting every week for some time now, so, you know, it, it used to be every other week. It was twice a month. Now it's four times a month. Selectmen don't even meet four times a month. Just saying.
Yeah, they meet on Mondays.
We used to meet every week, Pat, remember?
I do. Every week. So this is.
We, we, we know what we want to talk to the Selectmen about. We just outlined what we want to talk about. So I, I think putting it off for another six weeks or, or whatever, and maybe use the fifteenth to discuss what we want to discuss with them to get ourselves up to speed. I think that would be time well spent.
I think you're right, Bob. But then let us make certain with Julian and the Board of Selectmen that they can actually guarantee a date.
Right.
Because we could be flexible if we have it far enough in advance, too, and nothing has been promised that we can't put off.
Right.
Okay, so the board is all in agreement on that. And we'll tell Tom, please, Tom, give the bad news to Julian tomorrow, and tell him we need a date certain. Okay?
Okay. So we will post a meeting for December fifteenth, and I understand that with the board's pleasure. So we will post a meeting for December fifteenth, and I understand that what the board's pleasure is to talk about a future joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, review the multifamily bylaw, or to the extent that we can at that point, uh, as well as, uh, uh, take a, a drill down into the information that we got from Union Studios and Company for Davis Straits. Can I capture that accurately?
Yes. Yes. And that should be quite adequate for that December fifteenth meeting, I think. And we will try to keep it to an hour and a half as our third meeting of the month. Okay? All right, so our next meeting is December fifteenth, same time, same.
Paul has his hand up.
He did? Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't see that.
If we're putting this off for six weeks, I want to ensure that we don't do what we did last time. Because all of a sudden, instead of a meeting with the planning board and the select board, we invite five other boards. We have fifty people sitting around the table, and nothing really gets accomplished at those meetings. So if we're putting it off, I think we should insist on a one-on-one basis.
Well, that's the purpose, Paul. Is putting this one off, which is one-on-one, to another one in January because we didn't have enough time. And I don't think the select board has enough time either to pull anything together that they want to talk about. John?
When you're ready, I have a correspondence question.
Are we ready to leave this issue and go to John's question?
Definitely.
John?
So this was a question to the other board members. Today, I received my package in the mail for the meeting for this evening. And inside the sealed envelope was another sealed envelope addressed to me by a private citizen. Has anybody else received anything like that in their package? Yeah?
Well, I did directly sent to me, John.
Me too.
Me too.
Well, I would prefer if it goes to town hall, that stays at town hall and I go pick it up there. I have no idea what somebody's sending me like that, and I, it makes me a little nervous.
Me too, and I wonder why they're doing that. I mean, town hall, if something comes, um, I don't think they should be giving out our address or anything else, so.
They never give out our address, Pam. These were obtained by these, this private citizen, I believe.
Well, I would rather go to town hall and pick it up than have it sent to me in my package.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Cause it, it had the impression that it had something to do with something on our agenda.
Right.
Yeah, whereas if it was sent to my home address, I might not even open it.
Well, and actually, when Melinda sends things out on Thursday, I get them on time. When she sends them on Friday, our mailman doesn't get here until quarter of five lots of times. So.
Hours too.
I went by and I picked my packet up. And I was dropping something else off with Paul, so I dropped his off at the same time.
I, I just didn't know if everybody else got a, a letter also, and I can see they did, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you weren't singled out, John. Okay?
But I'm happy to send my, my letter to you as well, John.
Um, are we ready, ready to adjourn with our next meeting being December fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Eight twenty-two, we are adjourned.
Thank you.